Urban Rural Development Minister Atsarasus Utunis urging local authorities to reconsider their reliance on external debt collectors for recovering funds from defaulting clients. Now instead, he advocates for direct engagement with the account holders themselves to really understand the reasons for non-payment, to establish agreements rather than outsourcing this responsibility. Utunis himself is saying that the practice of handing over accounts to external debt collectors diminishes the role of local authorities' employees tasked with debt collection, reducing them to mere salary collectors. These remarks from Utunis come as legal battles faced by several local authorities, including Ondangwa, as they seek to recover outstanding debts from residents. Now, the question then begs, can local authorities handle debt collection without external players? We are joined by Swakopmund Mayor, that's Dina Namubes, on the line this morning. Mayor, to you, a very good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for having me here. How are you?
We're doing well. Thank you so much for making some time for us this morning. Axar Opindi also joins us, Deputy Mayor of Okahanja, as well as another portfolio that we'll be talking about shortly also, because he has some various expertise in that. To you, Ms. Opindi, a very good morning.
Yes, good morning, how are you, Colin? And good morning to your viewers.
Very well. Thank you so much for making some time for us. Mayor Namubes, perhaps we'll start with you this morning. We've seen the stories, you know, in Vintuk, in Vavish Bay, on a particular debt collector, while not being too popular and famous with the residents themselves. We saw what happened in Vavish Bay last week as well, and now Urban Rural Development Minister Atsarasus Utunis is saying that local authorities should rather, you know, handle this debt collection themselves. What is the current system now at the Swakopmund municipality?
Thank you so much for that question. I totally agree with the minister. And our council feels that we can manage our business or the municipality without red force assistance or support, as we follow and rely on our credit control policy. In addition to ensuring that the finance department runs smoothly, our formerly authorized accounting officer represents the council in ensuring that council funds are managed and distributed properly. And in addition, we have a large debt load, but we are nevertheless able to pay our employees to accomplish the jobs for us.
So it works? It's a system that works, is what you're saying?
Yes, for us, it is working, and I think the other municipalities are probably depending on outside help, because they are having the large debt with probably very limited internal capacity. And also, it could be that they don't have a CEO that can run the administration properly. But for us, it is working. We have the internal capacity that runs and that do the job for us, and we refuse to really seek for external support.
Ms. Opindi, what's the situation in Okahanja?
Thank you very much, Colin. First of all, I just want to greet the worship, the mayor of Swakopmund, for making time and joining us this morning. Yeah, back to your questions. Yes, indeed, I believe also as well that it is manageable to local authorities, even if it's not all that perhaps might not have the capacity to do with the issue. But I believe we will be able to run the affair and be able to collect the debts of Okahanja municipality. But we are, as we speak currently, we are in the situation where we already have red force in place.
So you have a contract with them?
Yeah, we do have a contract with them. But then it is a back and forth battle that we are currently fighting to get rid of red force. But we believe as a council that it was done in conjunction or in a proper way as our resolution.
What do you mean by that?
What we mean is that when we passed a resolution as a council, basically, we wanted just two people that be able to assist us on a contract basis. So it tends to come out that it was now red force brought in by maybe the CEO and others, and that is what we are now currently investigating. And we are ninety-two percent to complete the investigation.
So what you're saying is not all the council has agreed to this relationship with red force?
Not really all, because what I want to say is that the whole council.
Didn't agree at all? It was one person that did this on their own?
Definitely. That's what we are looking at, and we are doing investigation. But at the same time, while we're busy doing the investigation, we also want to engage the municipality of Vavish Bay. So to see how they go about it and how do they arrive at the court and how the court is dealing with the issue, including also their lawyers. I think we will be able to make use of that, but it is still yet to be seen, and we will be able to update the whole nation over the outcome. So we are not happy with the way red force was brought in, because we have the capacity, we believe, that we have the capacity to collect our debt, collect on our own, or perhaps just to have at least two additional people on a contract basis, for example, to say two years contract. And those people, they will be able to just to have a force in the council. But manageable, I believe, it can be manageable on a local level. But I want also to touch to the statement that the Honorable Minister have made to Ondangwa. It came as a shock to many local authorities, because red force actually have been in existence for so long, probably for ten years to fifteen years in Namibia. And the minister have also on the same ministry years for more than plus minus ten to fifteen years. I believe you could be now knows who is red force and how red force work. And I think this is a political statement and had to be treated as such. Remember, this is twenty twenty-four, a year of election, and any statement can come out any time.
So you think he's just saying that to appease the masses?
That's what most of us, we believe, because we have a platform that we need to engage with the minister. And we believe also that the minister could give a directive through the proper channels to local authorities instead of go and make such a statement at Ondangwa Red Force and Export. Thank you very much.
Mayor Namubes, perhaps just to go back to you, I mean, you say, look, your system has worked, your system is working. But has there ever been a time where you probably needed external help and looked at other institutions like red force, like other debt collectors? I'm just asking that, because if you look at the city of Vintuk, for instance, they don't believe that their own internal system works. They believe red force's model, which only charges a ten percent fee on actual payments, is more sustainable. They say it's a better sustainable approach for all parties involved. What's your experience been in that regard?
I think, you know, seeking for external support comes with expenses, financial expenses as well, because these bodies are not coming to do work for you for free. They are also charging. So on top of the bad debt that you have, and you are still seeking for external support, you are creating another expense on top of what you have already. So what we did following the COVID pandemic was we implemented a resolution that allowed the individuals to make arrangements and settle their debt in manageable instalments. Because we actually fell into bad debt as a result of COVID. And to our call, the public responded rather well and worked with us quite well. People in our neighborhood are working very hard to pay their bills. And around the end of the month, end of each month, lengthy lines of people, including the elderly, vulnerable at our municipality, paying their bills. And with this endeavour, we are able to retrieve a sizable sum of money. We actually retrieved a sizable amount of money, and this gives us confidence to really rely on the stakeholder relationship or the relationship that we have with our community members. Our council is also extremely frugal and vigilant about wasteful spending. And our CEO, in conjunction with the finance GM, is doing fantastic job of overseeing the council finances. So with us, I sit on my grounds to say we are capable of doing our own job, because we are paying people salaries to do the job for us. We have our legal structures that we also utilize in terms of certain cases that we have no control on. So we have definitely our lawyers and we have external support, but our external support is more on town development. Yeah, but truly, I don't trust in, or I don't believe in seeking external support whilst we have the people that can do the job. As I highlighted, we are privileged that we have a CEO or the administrator that is really running the administration very well. And I don't speak bad about the rest of the other councils. As I highlighted, it may be that their debts are very, very large, and they have no choice but to seek for external support. And also, it may be that they have a very small amount of internal capacity. As councils, we are there to advise each other and to help each other. And most important thing is that the community also needs to come and stand with us and support us, because the municipalities mostly rely on the taxes and rates that they are paying. That is, I mean, that is the only way the municipalities are creating or generating income. So we also rely heavily on the community support.
So what does your, what do the residents of Swakopmund owe you right now? Do you know where the debt level stands?
I need to, I need to, I cannot respond now on that one, but we definitely reduced the debt level from where it was, because we collected about a large amount of money. As I'm saying, people are coming through paying, and we are not as we were after COVID.
We are in conversation this morning with Okahanja Deputy Mayor, that's Axar Opindi, as well as Swakopmund Mayor, Dina Namubes. We're speaking on the, well, use of external debt collectors for recovering funds from defaulting clients when it comes to local authorities. Deputy Mayor Opindi, just to come back to the issue of Okahanja, so you're currently trying to see how you can get red force removed away from your municipality. But speak to us on what the system was before red force came along. Were you handling it well? Were you actually managing to get the monies owed to you?
Yeah, thank you very much, Colin. I think I need to give you a little bit more of how Okahanja were run. Number one, I think we're unfortunate councillors that came in in twenty twenty, because when you took over Okahanja municipalities, remember, there was no councillors for the past nine months. That was in twenty twenty. So the councillors were removed by the minister. And there was also no, sorry, the CEO by then. So basically means when we came in, it was quite a chaos, a chaos in Okahanja municipality, we have to start cleaning and do all these kind of things. So to a point where we need to, we came to discover that the debts that were accumulated were two hundred and twelve million.
Geez, that's a lot.
Yes, so that were owed to us, to the council, to the municipalities by residents, including the government institutions. I think the big portions of the debts was owed by the government institutions. So whereby you cannot able to wake up and close the hospital, we need to engage the ministry, we need to engage those bodies and so on to make some arrangement. But we have exhausted almost every effort that we thought we could do, to a point where we have to come now to say, let us look to capacitate the finance department in order for them to be able to collect more. So these two people that we were planning to have, they were not red force. They were actually just two additional people that we will be able to get as, we were able to get as.
Were they working for the municipality?
Just to work for them on a contract basis.
Okay, all right.
Just for two years and see how these people, they will be able to assist us in this regard. So that is basically what we found. And we believe up to today that we will be able to collect with those two additional members, we will be able to collect something that can come in the coffe of Okahanja municipality. But the question again that we want to put, all of us, is that, the question should be, why red force?
Who's the person that got red force at Okahanja municipality?
As I said earlier, that is yet to establish, because as I'm speaking to you right now, as Deputy Mayor of the town, I didn't see the contract.
Yeah, but surely the contract must have gone through procedures, hasn't it? At least, if not the mayoral office and the CEO's office to get final rubber stamp?
Definitely, but above all, they need a blessings of the council.
Of course.
Of the full council. And the absence of the blessings of the full council, then we can't believe that is a valid contract.
When is this contract coming to force?
As I said to you earlier, we are ninety-two percent as we speak. Next week, we will have a delegation of three councillors to Vavish Bay, just to engage Vavish Bay.
No, I'm asking, when did the red force contract, when did red force start operating in Okahanja?
They started operating last year, and we also just learned it on through the newspapers. And last year alone, I have wrote a motion to the council in order for us to divorce it. It was written on the twenty-first of June twenty twenty-three. And that is the motion that, as we speak right now, is about to be executed.
Mayor Namubes, I'm sure you've read the papers in various other municipalities, and you can hear the story now of the Okahanja municipality. Have you received any phone calls perhaps, or even, you know, spoken to any other municipalities to come to you and do a, not a comparative analysis, but, you know, more to come check in and see how you guys do things on your end, and perhaps see where you can provide some leadership, some guidance, some clarity on certain issues? Have these conversations popped up with other, you know, councils or municipalities?
Thank you, Colin. Not only for the red force, but the municipalities, we have been receiving calls and visits from different municipalities over Namibia. We had Orangimund, we had Rundu, and okay, Vavish Bay and us, we are sisters. Haini Bay, Arandes, and Okahanja, we are family in council. So we have been talking, we are visiting us. The good thing about the other councils, even we had, what is it, in the south, we have a council from the south visiting us. Really honestly, they are coming, and even Usako and Garibeb was here. That really the majority of the councils consulted us, and they were honest about wanting to learn and wanting to be at the same level as us. I'm not bragging about anything, but as a person that relies on the input and advice from the grassroots, I appreciate the calls from the other councils, and I appreciate their visits to us, because at the end of the day, we are councils that serve Namibia at large, and that is there to achieve the same goal and to really achieve global sustainable goals in the benefit of our Namibian nation. So we have been receiving calls, we have received visits, and we are both exchanging skills, expertise, and programs. So yeah, we have been receiving calls and visits from them, and I really do appreciate that. We also call them if we really want to learn from them. I really always call Vavish Bay, because Vavish Bay is an industrial hub, and they are receiving more business or more investors than us. And I'm always calling them, and I'm always asking them to please share the investors with us as well, because we also have investment that we probably didn't really reveal to the external world. But yeah, we have a very good relationship with the rest of the councils, and I believe where we, where they fall, we are there to help. Where we fall, we can rely on them.
It gives you confidence though, doesn't it, when they come to you for benchmarking?
I beg your pardon?
It gives you confidence, doesn't it, when you see the other municipalities coming to you for benchmarking because you're doing so well?
Yes, it really gives us confidence, and I'm always advising the town councils that we are different politicians serving the nation. But we really have to leave our political differences or alliances outside when we come to the council, because we are there for one purpose. And we, you know, as soon as you are coming into the council with your political differences, you are damaging the nation. So we leave our political differences outside, and we come as a team in saving the people, loving the people, and striving for life. So my advice to the councils is really forget about political differences, because it is affecting the decision-making, and it can really also affect the well-being of the community. So let's go into the council as brothers and sisters, and as council that is focusing on one goal. But yeah, it gives me confidence, and I'm always still learning, because when somebody is consulting, it also creates an opportunity for you to open opportunities for the rest of the people.
Eight forty-five is the time on the clock. We're one down on our conversation this morning with the Okahanja Deputy Mayor, that's Axar Opindi, as well as Swakopmund Mayor, Dina Namubes. We're speaking on, while the issues of relying on external debt collectors for recovering funds from defaulting clients for local municipalities. Deputy Mayor Opindi, do you have an idea on just how much is owed to you by defaulting clients in Okahanja? You spoke about two hundred million when you came into the council. What's the number looking like now?
Yes, the number is a little bit down, but it's still concern to us. It's still concern to us that.
You know how much it is?
Yeah, it's still plus minus one hundred and something a million.
All right.
That is owed. But as I said earlier, the huge potions sold by the government institutions, and I think we need to have a different approach.
Which institutions are these?
So we're talking about Namibian police, we're talking about Minister of Health, Minister of Foreign Culture, all other ministers, and schools, and you understand?
Yeah.
All those, those are government institutions that we are referring to. But we still want to have a different approach to see how can we engage, because for example, you cannot just close.
Of course.
You cannot close the hospitals water. So the same people that comes to the hospitals is the same people that we are serving, is the councillor. So it's our people, basically. So we need to look at how we'll be able to go about it, because, for example, to say maybe we need to, to say we are going to open the water from six o'clock to eight, then from eight to eleven, there will be no water. Just to make sure that, literally, we're trying to enforce these people, and also to create a very conducive environment, you know, in order for us to reach a common goal with the government and other. But what is important, I want to mention, is that it is always good when you are engaging, engaging the people. They need to understand what's concerned, because this water what we are using, we are also paying for it from Namwater. And we applaud to say that we have, at least as we speak now, cleared Namwater's account, as we speak, so we are updated on it. But we have a huge mandate we've been owed, and also one look at the point where we are saying we wanted to write off the debts, but it's not an easy exercise. So you need to tighten your belt. As the worship have said, we need to engage one another. We also partake that root of engaging other local authorities and to see how did they manage theirs, and also our device, and also benchmarking. I believe it is still not yet water under the bridge, but as far as we speak, we need to do our way with red force, because the question still remains, why red force?
Have, since the introduction in Okahanja, have they been assisting? Have they put money back in your kitty?
Yeah.
How much?
Not as what we want, and also, I don't want to jump on a conclusion, because I didn't see the contract.
Okay.
So basically, the contract would be able to tell me that how much are we paying red force? How much percentage do we are willing to give them based on what they have collected? So it's still something that, as I said earlier, we are busy investigating. We have somebody that is busy getting us everything together, and we believe we have a special council meeting just on red force early next week. So I believe that will be.
Is that when everything will be resolved?
It will be now a crossing over, a crossing road for us to see what will happen.
That's scary though, isn't it, that you don't know who signed that contract within your council?
It's quite scary, because we have, Okahanja is consists of seven councillors.
Yeah.
And as far as we speak, none of the councillors come out to say they have seen the contract. And basically, the CEO and the chairperson are the people that are being delegated or authorized by the council to sign all the contracts on the blessings. Besides that, the blessing of the council have taken place. So if I send you today, I said, go and buy for me a top score at Groove Mall, and you find there was, the top score in Groove Mall is not available. You cannot just proceed to Rehoboth, you basically have to come back to me and say, no, they have informed me that the top score is only, is finished, but they are also in Rehoboth in order for you to get that information, or that, go ahead, that yes, indeed, you can go to Rehoboth. So in the absence of that, if you go to Rehoboth, I don't know that you went to Rehoboth. So I only know that I sent you to Groove Mall. That is what basically we are trying to say. So we are going to get everything next week, and we will be able to inform the public in Namibia at large what is the next step that Okahanja municipality will take from there.
Mayor Namubes, your final contributions as you add on our conversation to this discussion?
Colin, I just want to highlight once again that we are not here to compete against each other, but we are here to learn from each other, and we are here to save Namibia at large. So my final contribution is that I want to highlight that our council is a very unique and exclusive council, and we love each other in our council, and we will do whatever in our effort to make sure that Namibians in Swakopmund at large is served with all the necessary services. And I love the rest of the other councils. As I said, we are brothers and sisters. We need to support each other. And one more thing is that stakeholder relation, stakeholder relations building is very important. I can confirm that our stakeholders love our council so much. The mining companies, the other industries are so in love with our council. And whenever we make a call, we get the support from our stakeholders. Thanks to all the mining companies, even the stakeholders, every person in our community, including the elderly, the youth, we rely on the support, and we are grateful for all the support thus far that we receive from you. It's because of you that we are able to thrive and that we are able to change our town into a smart city. Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Opindi, your final thoughts?
Yes, thank you very much. What I want to say is that I want just to edge the people of Okahanja communities that they should support the council. We are working very hard to make sure that we bring the smile on their face. The issue of red force will be located and will be dealt with accordingly, and that should not be dividing the council or the employees and all of them that involved. So as the mayor have just alluded to, we need to work together, and I want to confirm to say that we have a good relationship among all the councillors. We are not from the same party, but we have a good relationship amongst our councillors, and we hold hands each and every time. So it is not time to fight any longer. It's time for us to work together and achieve the common goal for the betterment of the residents. So um besides where we have fallen, I believe we need to pick up ourselves and try to gain energy and and move forward. But they must have trust on us. We we are capable, we are ready for and and also up for challenges. So therefore, we will get there. The everything is under control as we speak. So yes, we are moving on. So the question still remains, uh not only to Okahanya municipality, but to other local authorities. The question still remains, why Red Force? So that is the question and uh the answer, I think, it will come. Because I I don't believe that if everybody is crying, then something is not right. So Hoodfontaine is crying, um Kitmans, Rundo, Oshakati, everywhere. Vavishpey, Okahanya, everyone is crying, why Red Force? So we need to get the answer. That's my final words.
Well, the the Minister of Urban Rural Development, Erastu Tony, is saying that most probably. The only solution that will work in terms of debt collection is if municipalities and local authorities do away with external debt collectors. The municipality of Swakopmund as well as that of Okahanja this morning have echoed the sentiments of the minister. To you, Mayor Namubes, and to you, Deputy Mayor Opindi, thank you so much for your time this morning. And we're wishing all your municipalities the best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much Colin. Have a nice day.
Thanks, the same to you.
Thank you.
Well, that's the conversation on the forty-minute run, Red Force or not Red Force? Definitely Deputy Mayor Opindi is saying definitely not. We want to do away with Red Force. And actually, the fact they're investigating just how the Okahanja municipality got involved with Red Force. Nobody's picking up their hand and saying, well, I signed the contract, I gave a a green light for that contract. We saw last week or the week before that Wafishpey, uh while they got a court action to dismiss. Their uh contract with the with 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 Red Force. Other municipalities are not happy with the Red Force as well. It's not just residents that are arguing about this, it's it's more municipalities themselves also. And we'll see how this pans out, especially coming from the the suggestion. It wasn't a directive, it was a suggestion by Erastu Tony on rather to have the internal debt collection systems in order and in place. Texas, the eight fifty-six, that is the time on the clock. Thank you so much for making some time for us this morning.